Yeah. But they, there, this is it. They list the violations.
Yeah.
And they, there's four or five, and then some months there's like, oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just.
It's insane.
It's great. And some of them are just simple, like.
Yeah, this is stupid, yeah. Are the water treatment plants? I know it pulls, because that's what I was doing for a while. There's sand filters, they've switched to glass.
Yeah.
Is that something?
No, these are, these are usually charcoal filters, or sand, or both.
Yeah.
Okay. We will please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands on one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Mr. Fagatour.
Here.
Mr. Hurley.
Here.
Mr. George.
Here.
Mr. Conicker.
Here.
Mr. Lesby.
Here.
Ms. Metzler.
Here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Ms. Prickett. Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Thank you very much. And we'll just take a quick second to welcome Hillary Prickett to the board and the table. It was a long process to get here, so welcome aboard and thank you for stepping up, serving the community. Moving on, we'll go to visitors' comments on agenda items only. Seeing none, we will move on to presentations.
None this week.
And information items.
My apologies, Scott left to go home. He's not, he's not feeling well. And so the bond purchase agreement, we shared, shared that with you in the board packet. This isn't, this isn't new, but for Ms. Prickett, we have, we have considered in the past months, a bond issue to generate fifteen million dollars to allow us to move forward with the myriad of projects that we have in front of us. We don't have a direct pathway for that, for that money. That's something we're developing, I would say, between, between now and the end of the year, what we would actually be spending. For, for where we are and our ability to borrow, according to Ken from Raymond James, it makes sense to, to go ahead and do it now. We, we, you're limited in how much you can, can borrow at one time based on, you know, debt service ratios and a whole bunch of complicated stuff that, I don't know, maybe Jay could, maybe Jay could explain to us. But so we've, we've, we've put forth the idea of borrowing this initial fifteen million dollars for our upcoming infrastructure projects. And with the intention of, of approving that this month, and you saw the contract and you saw the, the, the schedules that were there. So do you have any questions on that?
I was looking through, and just one quick question that I have is around, so the fifteen million that we're taking out, is that a, is that a ten-year repayment? Like what?
The payback?
Yeah, like I saw that the max interest rate was six percent.
Yeah.
And obviously that's market driven based on when they're issued, but.
I don't.
What's the repayment period on those?
I, I, I will get from Ken what that is, and then, and then write to everybody, because I, I was under the impression we were more in the seven-year range for, for paying off these as we, as we go. So I will, I will get that for you.
And then at, at what point do we know more of having, you know, from doing these in the past, like at what point will we have a better idea of what the coupon would be for that seven-year note? Like we're looking at a contract that says max six. When will we have a better idea of what?
I think, if Ken were here, I think he'll be here next week to answer questions.
Like Brian, do you remember, like the last time we did one, like when we knew?
It's based on when we pass the resolution, then, then, then they can, because of the fluctuations that can happen.
Once the resolution's passed, they go to market, and then we know what the rate, okay?
Yeah, do it. I think, I think that's correct. Okay?
If you look back at that one spreadsheet that they prepared last, and I, I don't have it in my binder, the, the breakdown on the amortization of that bond is, is there. I forget which page, but.
Yeah, there was, it's, it's the, maybe the November, it's, it was, it was, it was in a solar.
Yep.
It was in the solar package. So if I can dig that up, I can send it to everybody. But I'll, but I will talk to Ken and make sure that what we're, what we're answering is what you're asking.
I just thought it was interesting that it wasn't in the contract that we're looking to approve. I would think the term would be in there. Maybe not, but.
I think it's because what we're, I, I think it's because what we're passing is a resolution for them to go out to market. And, and then I would imagine there's probably something that is accepting of that, but I'm, I'm actually unsure of that process. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to presentation of agenda items for the January twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five regular monthly public meeting. A, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the following policies first reading. Zero zero five, organization. Three oh eight, employment contract slash board resolution. Eight twenty-three, opioid antagonist. B, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation for purpose of retirement of Ms. Marcia Caskin, a first grade teacher at the Okterra Primary Learning Center effective June sixth, twenty-twenty-five. C, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation for purpose of retirement of Dr. Sandy Evans as the gifted support teacher at the Okterra Primary Learning Center and Elementary, Okterra Elementary School effective June sixth, twenty-twenty-five. D, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation for purpose of retirement of Mr. Phil Rudisil as a math teacher at the Okterra High School effective June sixth, twenty-twenty-five. E, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept with regret the resignation of Ms. Amy Hollingworth as an instructional assistant at the Okterra Intermediate School effective October fourth, twenty-twenty-four. F, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Ms. Katura Caldwell as an instructional assistant at the Okterra High School effective December twenty, twenty-twenty-four. G, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept the resignation of Ms. Kate McKim, McMinn, I'm sorry, Kate McMinn as an instructional assistant at the Okterra Primary Learning Center effective January seventeen, twenty-twenty-five. H, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve Ms. Mia Lowen. Did I say that right? Lowen, Lowen? Lowen? Ms. Mia Lowen as an English teacher at the Okterra High School effective January second, twenty-twenty-five, pending completion of employee-related documents required by law and the district. Ms. Lowen's salary will be fifty-eight thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars, prorated, which is step seventeen to max of the bachelor's scale. I, that the Okterra Board of School Directors accept Ms. Donna Jensen and Ms. Michelle Lofgren as homebound instructors effective December nine, twenty-twenty-four through January two, twenty-twenty-five at a rate of forty-two dollars and thirty-three cents per hour for up to three point five hours per week. J, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the following change in salary due to graduate credits earned. Christina Ruth, from Masters sixty-five thousand, three hundred thirty-eight dollars to Masters plus fifteen, seventy thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars, step thirteen to max. K, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Jason Ralston, varsity assistant boys basketball coach, nine points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, total five thousand, five hundred eighty dollars. Philip Woodward, junior high assistant boys basketball coach, four points at six hundred and twenty each, for a total of two thousand, four hundred eighty. Eric McCutcheon, varsity assistant girls basketball coach. Nine points at six hundred and twenty dollars each, for a total of five thousand, five hundred and eighty. George Constantineu, I hope I said that right. Junior high assistant boys wrestling coach, four points at six twenty each, for a total of two thousand, four hundred eighty. Allison Hickey, head winter cheer coach, seven points at six hundred and twenty each, for a total of four thousand, three hundred forty. L, that the Okterra Board of School Directors approve the following athletic workers for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year. Teresa Ruddock and Tessa Harkins, who's a student. So from there, we'll move on to the facility committee report. Mr. Jerk. Thank you.
We've hired a company to consult, and the next step after that would be an RFP. And the vape detectors, we have purchased as ten vape detectors using Esser funds, about twenty-five thousand dollars. They also pick up cigarette smokes, commotions, fights, noise, et cetera, which automatically turns on a camera to see what's going on in the area. They will be installed over the next couple of weeks. We touched on the water treatment plant. DEP came out for a five-year inspection for permits. Found some issues we're addressing right now. The tank cleaning has been completed. Tomorrow we're to install the blower replacement, and we have a few other issues left to address. We've talked about the backboards at the AD's request. We can't find the padding for underneath the backboards. We have failing safety straps up top. Current bid from Degler Whiting to replace them, and this will be something that's potential summer replacement that we're looking at. Other projects that we were talking about, discussion about the public entrance into the gym in the high school and the ceiling issue, and ways to address that, and all the gym lighting across the board has been completed, two LEDs. The last thing we touched on were the winter breaks projects. We had a lot going on. The incorrect wall in the middle school needs to be switched to glass, an installed window that doesn't meet code, that needs to be redone. And we'll have fobbing on the doors by the end of the month. Also, there's been new carpeting in the high school entrance. The high school cafeteria entrance has been painted. The exit to the new softball area has been carpeted, and the egress from the welding shop's been completed. And we are lining up summer projects now to get ahead of that. So that is a report for the facility committee.
Thank you. Moving on, other items or concerns?
I don't have any.
Visitors' comments in general. Any visitors' comments? Please state your name and municipality.
Good evening. My name's Kim Chappell. I'm a resident of West Fallow Field Township. Events have kept me from coming to school board meetings for the second half of twenty-twenty-four. But, and, and consequently, I've lost track of the progress in the plans for solar panels. And I recently became aware of the fact that the state is, is proposing grant money for solar installations, and so I don't know where Okterra currently is in this. I sent a letter to Dr. Lever and to Mr. Hurley. I did hear back from Mr. Hurley that he would be talking about the grant money, or the grant possibility with Dr. Lever, but I have not heard, and this was only very recently that I sent the letter. The, the grant application has to be in by January thirty-first. And there are sources that I included in my letters to Mr. Hurley and Dr. Lever. So perhaps someone could update me on where the solar project stands and whether applying for grant money is a possibility.
Absolutely. Let's, let's chat just after we're done. We can do that. We, we can chat as soon as we're finished.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other visitors' comments, we'll move on to administrator comments or announcements.
Good evening. On Tuesday, December seventeenth, we had ten junior high school seminar students, and their teacher, Mrs. Shang, traveled to the OPLC to provide a group of first and second grade students with STEM learning activities. This is the first time we tried this, and this, the high school, junior, junior, senior high school students had to develop these STEM activities and executed them with our staff, with our students from our building. Some of their activities were catch the Yeti, build a gingerbread sleigh, holiday escape room, create snowball launchers, holiday oobleck, and ornament decorating. It was a great way for our young students to be exposed to the elements of STEM and for high school students to serve and encourage primary-age students. When students were asked what they learned, they shared that they liked learning how to code, to unlock a lock, how to make oobleck, even some people didn't know what it was, that a balloon helps to make a snowball travel faster, and that learning is very fun. So thank you to Dr. Evans, Mrs. Shank, and Mrs. Kluge for orchestrating this event. Also, would like to thank the senior high students and the music staff for putting on a great holiday show for the elementary students, K to six. It was the day before winter break, and it was a great event. The weather held out. We walked, everyone walked across the street, and we all fit into the big auditorium, almost, maybe, one seat or two to spare. But we really appreciate the work that went into this event. Students were awesome, and we hope it becomes a yearly tradition. This coming week, on Wednesday, the OIS has their winter concert at six-thirty, and on Thursday, OPLC has their kickoff to kindergarten event. Incoming kindergarten students and their families are invited to come and explore the OPLC, and doors open at six-thirty. And personally, I would like to really thank Marcia Casson and Sandy Evans for their years of servants, service to the students and staff of the Okterra community. Both peach, both teachers have positively impacted so many students' lives over the years, and they will be very hard shoes to fill. I feel like I've grown up with both of them, and they have kind of helped mold me to become the leader I am. So thank you to both of those staff members. We will definitely miss them.
Hello, Happy New Year, everyone. It's great to see everyone here tonight, and welcome. As I see tonight. I just wanted to point out a, a new addition to the facility in the, in the security vestibule. If you have not had an opportunity to see that as you entered, if you did not come in this way here. We are moving forward as we make plans for, for the middle school. You know, it's been incremental, as I've shared in the past. The newest updates, we, Stevie Kell is the secretary that is now housed in the middle school office. She'll serve as my secretary. That is new. The vestibule is also new. Our hope is that by the end of the month, we will have all necessary pieces in place so that we can operate the middle school entrance and exit as a pickup and drop-off spot for our students and for our families. We anticipate that being by the end of the month. So want to again thank the board for their commitment to a middle school here for Okterra students and for the work at the facilities. Thank you.
I just have two brief things. Good evening, everybody, first off. Two brief things related to athletics. First and foremost, I, I just want to say we had an event last week that is probably tops in my books in terms of athletic events that we've ever had at Okterra. We had our first unified bocce match, home match, I should say. And for those that were, that were there, I mean, they can attest to how incredible that event was, how excited our students were to participate. We, we came away with a victory also. That was also a, a, you know, bonus, but we had a lot of folks that, that came out to, to watch. But the attitudes of our, our students, the excitement that, that they, they had for it was, was awesome. And I, and I learned a lot, you know, just in terms of how, how it operated, and, and I'm excited to, to see us play again. So they've been talking about it. They're excited about going to practice today. It's, it was really just a, a nice thing. So I, I encourage you to, to come visit us during a bocce match if you have the opportunity. I'm afraid I don't know the, the next match off the top of my head, but. I also will invite you to our boys varsity basketball game tomorrow night. We have a big game versus Mannheim Central for a share of first place. Coach Lambert has the boys playing very well. They're, I think, for like thirteen and one, and we've only lost to Mannheim Central, so, and that was by four. So we're hoping to reclaim victory tomorrow night for a share of first place, and hope to see you there next week. We'll have some more.
I, I know some people on the bocce ball team, and they all seem very, very excited, and they're all like very involved and, like, just like really excited about doing it, which is really nice to see. And I, I wasn't at the match. I wasn't able to go, but I heard from people who went, and they said it was really great. And I was also wondering, is, is the color of the cafeteria, is that like it? Is it gonna stay like that? Because it, it's fine, and it looks nice that it's repainted now, but it looks a little sad, because it's just all gray now. Like everything got painted over.
Small steps.
Okay.
Small steps. Now we're looking for student input. Small steps. Now we're looking for student input on what could be there to dress it up, whether it is, uh, a brave emblem or whatever. Uh, but yeah, fixing the rails, painting things, making it a little more presentable was something our students deserve. But, uh, we can, we can absolutely have a discussion about what will make it feel a little more at home for our students.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to, uh, also mention bocce. Uh, since, uh, Okterra School District has never lost a bocce match. You know, in the history of bocce at, at, uh, at Okterra. No, what was the most, uh, there, there was many things that were heartwarming, but I think the most heartwarming was watching, um, so many of our athletes in the stands watching bocce and cheering our, our, our bocce team on. Uh, baseball players who were in between, you know, going to a practice, and track athletes, and the girls' basketball team, all taking time to, um, to engage in that. And, um, Mr. Hillbolt is probably instrumental. Um, him and, uh, Mr. Fantasi, uh, probably are the two people who did the most to bring this opportunity to our students. But it is, uh, it's really, really fun to see our, our students collaborate around something like bocce, and just to watch, um, a group of students who, uh, find so much joy in being able to compete and to have something that they can, um, can be a part of, and the magic of a team. Um, and I love the collaboration between regular ed and special ed students as well. Um, so thank you, Mr. Hillbolt and Mr. Fantasi, and, um, Dr. Propper for your support of that. Um, it's, it's a very, it's a very strong addition to our, to our program. Um, I also want to commend, um, Rob Zetley, uh, who was in the facilities meeting, and, um, you know, our, our, our tech crew. Uh, they get, they get, uh, they get recognition often when things don't work, and when they don't, they don't work well, and, um, but I, that doesn't happen very often here. And what I've appreciated about Mr. Zetley over the last, I would say, six to eight months, is looking for projects that are expensive projects that we need to do, but thinking forward so that we can use, uh, Esser's dollars, which we were trying to, to spend down the last of, and, um, and, and having it be something that's really meaningful and is going to prevent us from needing to, to fund it out of our general fund. And he's been amazingly responsive. Um, you will, you will probably see with Shrek, um, a new projector, uh, in our auditorium, also purchased with Esser's dollars, because we had, um, I, I don't know if you're familiar with the movie Brewster's Millions, but it seemed like every time we were told we had spent, we were told there's more that we need to spend. And Mr. Zetley has just, it's just been impressive to watch him say, you know, "Rob, is there anything in technology? This has to be a technology purchase. What can we do that's meaningful?" And, um, and then pursuing things through E-Rate, which is, um, another way that we get funding, uh, which, right now, is in jeopardy, whether E-Rate will, will continue. And so, taking, um, taking projects that we need to sustain our programs and finding creative ways to get those done without, um, without taking them from the general fund. Uh, I just really, really appreciate the work that he's done and the flexibility and the fact that he and Joey, thank you, Joey, drop everything to solve these problems for us. And so, um, thank you to your department, Joey and Rob. Also, I wanted to comment on our retirements. Marcia Caskin, um, Sandy Evans, and Phil Rudicil. Um, those are, those are three really good, really good teachers. Um, it's hard to watch people retire. Um, but, you know, in talking with Phil, uh, this, at the end of last week, um, you know, after he gave me his letter, um, he said that he, he had considered retiring, uh, about three or four years ago, and then he kind of found a second wind, and, you know, he's enjoyed, uh, he's enjoyed his last few years. He's enjoying his current year, but he also is just looking forward to retirement. And, um, had a similar conversation with, with Marcia earlier in the year, um, and, and we will miss these people. Uh, they have brought a lot to our kids. Um, there are going to be some more of these coming. You know, it's a strategy that we've put in place to try to encourage our employees to let us know, um, in advance so that we can get ahead of hiring. And so, uh, as these trickle through, um, I'm glad they're not all coming at one time so that we can spend time kind of on each person. Um, Dr. Evans and, you know, her impact, uh, with our, our gifted kids, and, um, you know, such a sweet spirit. Uh, these are, these are hard people to replace, but what I can say is when we hire well, and then a young person comes in, I, I feel this way about our middle school counselor, you just find yourself saying, "How did we function without this person?" And, and that's, that's what we get when we hire well. And so I appreciate them giving us early notice, because it allows us to go out and pursue people and, and, and hire well, and gives us time to do that. Um, I also want to remind the community, um, that, uh, this Thursday, uh, the sixteenth, we're gonna have a town hall meeting where we will talk about, uh, the facilities plan that we are, are working on. Um, it is ultimately going to be a ten-year plan, but there's a lot in there, and there's some decisions that the board has to make, and so we're doing two town halls, one on the sixteenth and then one on February third, um, just to allow the community to hear what our plans are, and, um, ultimately for us to collect questions that we can then post to the website on, um, you know, what are the, what are the questions that people have. Uh, one of the big decisions that we have is we have older buildings that need, um, need a lot of work, and the work is, is very expensive. And so there's some, some hard decisions that the board has in the coming months, and we want to try to collect as much input from the community as we can. So I would encourage people to come out on the sixteenth or the third, um, and be able to, you know, come with your questions. Uh, if we can't ask, answer your question during the town hall, we certainly want to be able to, to get answers and post them for the community to be able to, to see those. Um, I also want to just give a little bit of a shout-out to our holiday shows. Um, how many of you got to a holiday show? Uh, did you notice how much better the sound was? Um, Joe, Joe Lynch, uh, has worked really hard to work on our sound, and, um, we, we ordered some new mics. Um, there will be a, a new projector that is, again, we, we use for some Esser funds, that just gives, um, a lot more flexibility to our, uh, performing arts programs. And when we, uh, I think it's Shrek that is coming up here. Um, and, uh, I, I just, I'm thankful for Joe and the fact that he continues to look out for that facility, even though I don't think we pay him anything to do that. But he continues to do it and to advise us on things that we need to do to help support the arts. So, um, thank you, and thank you to our, uh, our whole music, music team and the work that they did to put on, uh, what were really entertaining, uh, performances for our community. Um, so thank you to everybody. And, Ms. Prickett, welcome. Um, we're, we're happy to have you here.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to board comments. Any board comments?
Yeah, I have one. Uh, I know everybody's busy. Couple months ago, I had asked for some sort of audit or whatever you want to call it on, um, uh, God, band, extracurriculars, things like that, on what's driving some of the reduction in numbers for the music department band in particular.
I haven't forgotten. Um, I did talk to the music department and Dr. Propper, and we'll bring that back for you.
No rush. I just want to, I just want to be sure that it's not a scheduling thing. I've heard, I've heard varying things about that. I want to make sure that we're doing all we can to promote that, you know, and as, as we get towards the end of the year and looking forward, that's when it should be appropriate.
No, I, I, um, I'm, I'm waiting for some data to come back from the music department. And, um, we, we know, we know that when kids are involved in things, they do better in school, and we want to be breaking barriers down to involvement rather than putting barriers up. So, all of these things are things that we, we want to consider. So thank you for raising that again, Mr. Doris.
Any others? All right. I'll follow Dr. Lever's example and say, "Thank you, Hillary." Welcome aboard. I'll announce the following meetings. Uh, facility committee meeting met earlier this evening, Monday, January thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, six p.m. in the middle school multipurpose room. There was an executive session for legal and security, Monday, January thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, prior to the work session in room one-oh-two of the middle school. Policy and finance committees will meet next Tuesday, January twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, six p.m. in the middle school multipurpose room. Next regularly scheduled board meeting, Tuesday, January twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five, seven p.m. in the middle school multipurpose room. Education committee, Monday, January twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-five, six p.m. in the middle school hub. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.